...on this meeting agenda prior to board action. Should a member of the public wish to address the board on a topic not listed on this agenda, there will be a second public comment after the board's regular business has been conducted. Residents who wish to address the board are required to state their name, their address, and the agenda item they will be commenting on. Thank you. First up will be Megan Gray, who wants to discuss the transportation.
Just so everyone knows, just five minutes of category for everyone, just so everyone has a chance to address the board. Left in the middle, yeah?
Hi, Megan Gray, Sixth Tower Court. I have a very quick question. What's the transportation update discussed during the executive session?
This one, tonight? Megan, tonight?
Yeah, right now.
No?
Just recently.
No?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gray. Next up will be Nicole Manella. Yes, please. And she'll be discussing the Gloucester Catholic students requesting a stop change.
Hi, Nicole Manella, this is Nicole Torres. I understand that the transportation situation is huge. And there are seven Gloucester Catholic students that use these out-of-district buses. And we've requested changes to the bus stop, and we haven't gotten any response. And we haven't been given a person to communicate with about changing the route. Is there any way we can...
Yes, I will take that. This is so beautiful area. I will take that, and I will have Sue Thomas Haskett, our Transportation Director, to contact you.
I have spoken with her, and she refuses to consider our request.
Oh, I thought you said no one reached out, I'm sorry.
Well, I reached out in the beginning of the school year, and then I reached out to multiple other people, and everyone basically said that, no, there will be no changes.
Okay, well, I will definitely call you tomorrow then.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Manella. Next up will be Louise Fyandi.
Actually, I submitted that for her.
Okay, it's the same thing? I will call you, and I will call her as well? So, Ms. Manella, all these are the same, can I...
There's four of them, yeah. They're all Gloucester Catholics.
Yeah?
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up will be A.J. Holcomb.
Good evening, A.J. Holcomb, 317 Crown Point Road in West Effer. This is our office. I'd like to first start off by reading an email that I sent to the board the day after the transportation bid that was in May of '21. I do not believe anyone in the board received it, they all got rejected. I used the normal email addresses for anyone else that ever sent anything to West Effer at WD, and they all came back. I did send it in person to the board office. I'm not sure if anyone received it, but I would like to read it. Dear West Effer Board members, It's been a pleasure transporting West Effer students since June of 2017. We began this relationship when we acquired HABHRT's Transportation Department. My understanding is that HABHRT has been transporting West Effer students for fifty-plus years. Due to the increase in fuel wages and other expenses, we have not been able to renew the '22-'23 school year at the 1.91 CPI increase. We have always valued the relationship and tried to provide exceptional transportation at an affordable rate. We were informed that the '22-'23 school year would be our last year providing transportation to the district. The district has decided to buy its own buses, hire its own drivers, mechanics, and build a facility for the Transportation Department. The bid was opened May 12th, 2022, at 2:00 p.m. Our prices increased from last year, not only due to the increase of fuel wages and other expenses. We have also invested heavily in upgrading the fleet of buses continuing to service the district safely. Considering this is essentially a one-year contract, we will not have the option to renew it for the foreseeable future, we had to adjust our price accordingly. If we knew we were able to sustain the relationship, the price would have been significantly less. We talked about a 73% increase. So, when I had this contract for all these years, and last year was '21-'22, I'll just give you an idea. I ran the buses for $57,000. A 1.19% increase would not sustain the price of fuel, the driver wages, and those things. So, yes, if I'm 73%, it was basically a lame duck year. I could only transport the students for one year, I had no future. You can't go to the bank and say, hey, I need a loan for a bus, I'm a one-year contract, and you have five, seven-year payment on the bus, it just doesn't work, they don't allow you to do that. So, I do transportation for many, many districts in the area. This was in the last district you should have tried to privatize. They were 25% less than any district that I did anywhere. We have an office in town, that's part of the reason why we do it, so cheap. So, these numbers that are being skewed here today, and the 73% increase and all that, this year it went from $57,000 to $97,000 per bus. I'm doing other districts for $75,000. So, the prices would have been less, but if I get one-year contract, obviously your price is going to go up. I have to, you know, put my resources in other places. No sports, no extracurricular activity. I had to save the folks to do other districts. I had to try to grow my business in other districts because I have no future here. If I had a future here, the price would be less, I'd still be doing your sports, I'd still be doing your extracurricular activities, and everything would be done at a very reasonable, affordable price. $137,000 to buy a brand-new bus? So, if you need that many buses, my calculation is it's going to cost the district $5 million. You're going to try to build a facility, I can't imagine that's going to cost us $1 million. You've got to hire all the drivers, and the only way you're going to do that, I guess, is you're going to try to pay more than any other district or any other transportation provider out there. We have safety personnel. This is what we do. You talked about keeping the money in the classroom, I think you should try to keep the money in the classroom.
Thank you, Ms. Holcomb. Next up will be Ms. Amy McKay.
I'm sure. Amy McKay, 251 Crown Point Road. First, I just want to say thank you for having a committee meeting like this. I know our board meetings are usually much smaller than this, which would be your attendance, sadly, but it's wonderful that you're giving everybody the opportunity to speak on this. So, thank you for listening and volunteering your time. First, I wanted to speak on transportation, and it's funny because I was going to say the same thing that Mr. Holcomb said, or the representative from Holcomb said, which was, in April of 2021, when we announced transportation, we were going to be dealing with the same things that transportation companies were dealing with, which was rising costs of fuel, rising costs of parts. But I think that, and I apologize for using the word, but the word I would use is, out of spite of us taking that contract from them, of course, we were going to eat it. And we ended up eating it the next year, which raised us 73%. And we ended up eating it again this year because we're still not prepared, and we are just getting, I think the word was, our conceptual plan today. And this was pitched in April of 2021. So, where was this diagram and this conceptual plan when it was voted on and approved by, presented by Jeanne, and voted by our board back in April of 2021? There was no further information I inquired at that meeting, where it was going to be, and we were told that information still couldn't be disclosed. And I know that that location has shifted ever since. So, that's all I have to say about that. But I did also want to comment on J-18, which is the accountant position. I'm just curious why we suddenly need an accountant, which we've never needed for our five districts, plus maybe National Park shared services. And when I went through the job description, it looks like 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9 of the things that were listed on Jeanne McColey's job description in the 2020 listing are now listed under this position, and the only things not mentioned are transportation planning and construction, and in-service training. All of the other items, insurance, accounting, purchasing, budgeting, negotiations, all of these items are now going to fall under this new person in administration that we have to spend money on that isn't going into the classroom, it's just going into another paperwork position. So, I'm just curious why we're suddenly looking at that position when we've never had the need for that, and is it because we're taking on transportation? And lastly, I just wanted to mention G-15, the subrates for instructional aids going up. I think it's wonderful, we need more subs in our district. But again, you're hurting the instructional aids that you have within districts when they look at, a sub getting paid more money than they actually get paid per hour. Thank you.
The subrates that are going up right now, currently, you know, as the, we start to go up every year, $14, $15 with the cost of living, because that's kind of the update, we had to make sure that we had the, what you're supposed to be doing to make sure everyone gets the right amount of money. The Jeanne McColey idea, when you just mentioned, it's really about the school accountant position. So, for the past eight years, this is a position that had several people that used to work in the business office, and over those eight years, they cut an assistant DA, a bookkeeper, and they also cut a administrative assistant. So, three people were cut, and all those job responsibilities fell back on one person. So, this was a time, and I think the board approved that back in the, you know, to discuss the opening of this job, we just got back to it now with the whole transition of people. So, that's kind of where that happened, is the school account aspect. Before... We never approved anything, we never voted on anything.
Oh, I just mean that it might have been that year. It was in our budget that year. It was presented in that April 2021 budget. So, it was the first year that it kind of came to light that we were going to be in-housing, which would be why the May 2021 email probably was a follow-up to that, because it was one month later after they found out that we were going to be pulling that contract from them. So, I'm just curious why that conceptual plan wasn't presented at that time, but we were on board for moving forward.
Thank you, Ms. McKay. Next up will be Brad Cook.
1105 Allerton, sort of the corner of Sherwood West and Harwood Jessup. My question is, has any consideration been to the existing homeowners that live to back up to a bus depot? The value of their home is going to drop, because who would almost live near a bus depot? You know, so, gotten finished, we've got to leave the neighborhood, or even new families coming in, the value of the home is going to, you know, just plummet, live next to a bus depot. Is that taken into consideration, your existing taxpayers, people that live there? When you live in Sherwood West? I take it nobody lives in Sherwood West, or else you never would even consider this. There's other viable options in West Effer. You have Marty Gray Field, there's a paid parking lot over there, a nice little property. You can fit forty buses easily in that parking lot, I've seen it done. So, this is just a, obviously by the turnout, this is a bad idea, really, really bad idea. Thank you.
That's like four that haven't answered.
Danielle Flynn.
Hello, members of the board, my name is Danielle Flynn, and I live at 785 Carter Hill Drive, also a resident of Sherwood West. So, I have concerns. I'm here as a parent of a West Effer student, and I wanted to share my concerns related to the bus lot and garage plans to be located near the middle school and backing up to Sherwood West. Again, I think Brad just shared that none of you live in Sherwood West, so may not be aware of the considerations that we have as a development with this plan. For the record, I am not in favor of this. I know many of you do have students that are West Effer students, and would you want a bus parking lot and garage in your backyard? Do you know, as residents of Sherwood West, we hear the school bells from our house each time the students switch classes? Do you know that we can hear children playing at recess and during gym class? Do you know that your plans for a bus parking lot will bring many new concerns to me and my families in that neighborhood? Each day, the school students will also hear the roar of the buses. In addition, all middle school students, families in our neighborhoods, will be breathing the air. Have you researched any health implications to having this bus, these buses parked in that area in such close proximity to our homes? There may be changes that Dr. Gesmendi announced tonight about using gasoline over diesel that maybe I wasn't aware of, so I appreciate you taking the time to explain that. But would these changes also bring different risks? There's risks of fire close to our neighborhood when you have that large amount of gasoline in the area. There has not been transparency about this plan prior to Dr. Gesmendi's presentation tonight, and I appreciate that. We are unaware of the timeline for this change, and feel this information was announced in a holiday letter that came out to the community, not properly communicated to the West Effer residents. How will the information be shared moving forward? I saw a previous post on social media as how I saw the plan prior to this tonight, and feel that there should be a different approach to communicating that information to us as residents. As we all know, the traffic at the middle school is already a dangerous area during drop-off and pickup, and I appreciate the explanation tonight regarding how the traffic will go, but still have great concerns over the way that could impact with so many buses leaving, even if the timing is, you know, planned out properly. Are there areas with a further mile radius from all schools, neighborhooding developments, and children in the area that can be considered? Prior to tonight's presentation, there was no transparency regarding the cost of this proposal. It appears to be a large area that will need to have a lot of buses, and will require ongoing upgrades that come with a cost, and the cost of maintaining the buses. Who's driving the buses with the current shortage, and how will that cost be supported in that plan that was already shared? Who will look at safety? Safety of these buses and safety of the community? I know with some of the bus companies around here, there's a director of safety that oversees all of the safety of our children and on the buses. So, will that require a role as well that will cost money? So, I think there's a lot of unanswered questions by all of us here tonight. So, members of the board, I ask you to think about how we should react to this, and think about how you would feel if this was being planned in your backyard.
Next up will be Amy Erender.
My name is Eve Erender, I live at 1235 Arlington Road in Sherwood West. And I'm just here to say, I have been a resident at West Effer for most of my entire adult life. I raised my kids here. My husband and I moved to Sherwood West seven years ago because it's a beautiful development, quiet, and a great place to raise family. It was my dream to live there. And since I've recently heard, learned of this board's plan to build a bus garage at the middle school that is directly across the street from my house, I'm here tonight because I am against the plan. I'm so disappointed that the school board would even consider doing this without even notifying the residents prior to tonight. Has there been any consideration of what this will do to the residents of Sherwood West? What will the suit to our home's value? How is our street going to be impacted? What about the noise level, and the fumes, and the eyesore that will be seen from our houses? Over the past year, especially in front of my house in Arlington Road, the streets have been overcrowded, both cars and parents all along the street picking up their kids from the school. Kids are everywhere, darting across the street, it's an unsafe situation, and I have not seen anyone in the school even address this. However, now we're having the buses put across the street from the middle school, South Middle School. I'm just here to also, I want to ask the same kind of questions that everybody else has asked tonight. Would you want this for your house? Would you want this across the street from your home, where you're raising your family, where your children are? Would you want your children to breathe in this fume? I certainly do not. So, I'm wondering why we weren't notified or taken a poll for our development prior to the proposed plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Erender. Next up will be Ryan Walker.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Ryan Walker from 1235 Arlington Road. I was a graduate of West Effer High School in 2016. The points that I wanted to address have already been spoken. However, I'm worried about the garage cutting into quiet mornings in the day-to-day, daily life. No one deserves to hear forty-five of these buses going off and driving around every single morning of every week. I'd also like to say it's pretty unfair to add one of these parking garages to any neighborhood. One day, I came home from work, and I noticed that somebody from my neighborhood had slipped in a piece of paper that was in my door. I went out to go grab it, and I saw that it was the notification of this proposed plan. And I was shocked, but I was also very disappointed that I had to hear it from someone who lived on my street rather than from the school district itself. And that's all I've got to say today.
Next up will be Chelsea Mahaffey-Hill.
Chelsea Mahaffey-Hill, I'm at 1263 Arlington Road, Ray Jordan Bus, there's a lot of people over here. All right, I don't need it, but... Oh, that's right, I have to, all right. So, being the daughter of a public servant my whole life, who's held positions across many prominent and public titles in West Effer, believe me, I can understand the sacrifices, responsibilities, reasons why many of you are sitting up here today. So, I tend to choose understanding over scrutiny on many, many issues. So, I think that for the right reasons, many of you are on here, and putting yourself out there despite public opinion and accusations, right? But I'd like for you to reconsider any further investment, or any further expansion of this West Effer Transportation Department. You've heard so many people say why they don't want in their backyards. But I think we have a huge lack of transparency here, right? I have a complaint speech here that it's just too hard to look at all of you and read this at the same time. But it seems as though we are not looking beyond this one-year tax duplication or whatever, and those numbers are now inflated due to us using Holcomb as a scapegoat and the rising costs that actually aren't completely true at the level that you put on your seven slides. So, hopefully, you know, the ground on which you've made this project could have been justifiable, right, fourteen months ago, however long ago when you first started thinking about this. But they've certainly shattered now, or have been reversed in the current landscape of the economy, and just like the overall sentiment of all of us completely against this decision that you guys have made privately, not publicly, right? And I'm shaking your head. It's kind of hard to see that. When some of us had only found out about this project by seeing surveyors in the lot across our homes, and had to go out and ask them what they were doing, and so we took it upon ourselves to let everybody else here know, maybe we should get involved a little bit more, right? I like being behind and seeing, but in front of it, a little bit different. All right. So, I'm just hoping that you understand it's not too late to push the pause button on this project. And maybe you can actually take time to consider if this is the best decision for our children, students of township, and its residents. By expanding the Transportation Department and bringing 100% of our blessing, transportation internal, we may have better control over a few circumstances, but this also now means we assume sole ownership of the risks, the problems, liabilities of being in control of last-minute transportation. Problems with everything Danielle said, we see over there, logistics, operations, personnel, contracts, manpower, taxes, licensing, interest on the capital, insurance, liabilities, safety, regulations, compliance, maintenance, repairs, vehicle updates, personnel costs, community relations, customer service, third-party cooperation, that's how much more it takes to run a transportation company. All of that, which is supposed to help us with the least tax impact? These burdens, these risks, fall squarely upon the residents of this town, and are foreseeable tax increases that will undoubtedly happen sometime in the future. You know, we are going to find your trial whenever, we're going to enclose the cost of failure, the experimentation of launching and operating a transportation company. So, my girls will be entering the school system within the next few years, and I'm genuinely disappointed and afraid that they will not adequately be equipped for a future filled with success and opportunity. If our Board of Education continues to make decisions without their best interests in mind, one that may or may not ensure a bus picking them up for school, but one that blatantly disregards if their school's heated or air-conditioned for us up-to-date advanced methods for building their skill sets and their mindsets, and a love for lifelong learning, could we agree that this project and this plan...
Ms. McKay, your five minutes is up.
Give her five, bro.
Chelsea, Chelsea. I will, I'd take that if you want me to, do you want me to take that? Next up will be Matt Dechen.
Hello, how are you? My name is Matt Dechen, I live at 940 Doncaster Drive in Sherwood West. I'm a lifelong resident of West Effer, the West Effer management. I also live around the corner, like I said, in Sherwood West. I credit those of you who sit on this board, it's a big undertaking, and it's one that you've chosen to take. Prior to today's meeting, I took some time to read your bios on the Board of Ed website, and I found some consistencies. You speak about transparency, communication, and a focus for the highest quality of education. All positions, everyone in this room can stand behind. However, I don't see the actions of those words. Have you seen our test scores for math and language arts? Have you seen our district's ranking? I'd say a school budget of $55 million should do a whole lot more. Your focus on busing is taking away from vital funds that could be used for student achievement in math, language arts, vital funds that could be used for building safety, vital funds for building updates. Aside from HVAC and other routine upgrades, with a first grader and a sixth grader in this district, I can tell you, these buildings look the same way as when I was here. And the proposed plan for this in-house busing and bus terminal here at this middle school won't get us anywhere close to fixing this. The way I look at this, someone on this board, or someone in this administration, has a pet project, and their hidden motivations to build a resume with a project like this, at the expense of the taxpayers of this small district. I have three points that I need to share about this proposed terminal, bus terminal, and I expect transparency of your intentions. First, financial and HR burden to the district, incurring drivers, mechanics, insurance, liability. This is the definition of penny-wise and pound-fullish. For a small district, this is, this will be, this will become crippling financially. You're making decisions that will impact this township for years to come. This board has increased school taxes each year for the last three years, and I'm supposed to trust you that this plan is going to save us tax money? Under this, undoing this in five years from now could put this district in financial instability. The fact that there's been no feasibility study made public absolutely shocks me. And it also screams that something's being hidden. Is this the transparency that you talked about in your bios? Because this is your legacy. Impact to students. There has been no study addressing the impact to students of this middle school. There have been numerous public studies about green space and how that correlates with higher test scores. Our middle school already has limited outdoor rec space. I have yet to see the studies that find forty-five school buses will correlate to higher test scores. Instead, I have to assume a drastic and very negative impact on this school building, the teachers, and student achievement. And student achievement is why we're all supposed to be here. Noise, pollution levels, they need to be studied. Impact to student walkers need to be evaluated. A traffic study has to be done. Our middle school pickup and drop locations are already congested. You are making decisions that will impact this district for years. Undoing this in five years from now will be a massive undertaking. Is this the communication style that you talked about in your, in your bios? Because this is going to be your legacy. Impact to established neighborhoods and communities. In today's planning and zoning regulations, it's shocking to me that we could get here without anyone in this neighborhood being officially notified by anyone on the school district or from the township. Those neighbors voted for you to put you on this board spot. Administration, we are the taxpayers. You are making decisions that will impact our home values without care in a plethora, in a town with a plethora of commercial space. The impact will be permanent to residents of this town and it will be for years to come. Without a feasibility study, without a traffic study, without township zoning and planning input, I've requested this information from the township. I talked to people at the township. There are no plans. And the plans don't exist. Is this the transparency and communication that you've been talking about? Because this is your legacy.
Handwriting tried for the bit, sorry about that. So Christine Grazzioli, 1254 Arlington Road, again, right here, right in Sherwood West. Good evening. I'm regarding the transportation update as well, for everybody else. I'll get to transparency in a second. Everybody's been talking about transparency and it's obviously paramount right now. But my first question is clearly, why was this location not disclosed in that superintendent office? You were so excited about it when you first declared that in the Thanksgiving letter that you sent out, right? Where everybody did that. You said, "The exciting thing is we are looking forward to move, looking to move forward with this project without having to purchase any new land, rather using land we already own." We will continue to notify the community as we reach benchmarks for our goal, but we didn't receive more notification about that. So I'm not sure how that applied there. Could this be, did you not disclose this because it could have been if you knew the backlash that was going to come? Did you think it was better to hide the location and then have the residents in the town find out your plans to stick a bus garage wedged in the field? Right at the beginning of the middle school, on top of our backyards of our neighbors in the surrounding area where kids are walking to school and playing outside at recess? Transparency should be paramount, not only to the parents of the children in West Effer school system, but also to the whole community in town. You are making decisions that not only above our children, but that could potentially affect the whole entire town as well. We all pay taxes in this town, so I believe we have a say in huge decisions like this one that could affect our taxes, property value, and children's safety. But you did not reach out to the community to see if this was something that the majority would be on board with. You did not take into consideration the concerns of everyone in this town and there was no transparency. Some could argue, well, they've been talking about bringing busing in-house for a while now. Do you think if we knew from the beginning what your plans are, that we would be okay with it? On the surface of some, it seems like bringing busing in-house could maybe work if you had all the ducts around and everything lined up and squared away. But the fact is that it seems as though you scrambled defined property to house busing and then stick it in a spot that's one hundred percent going to ruin the value of homes around it, distract and risk the safety of children, and disrupt traffic. It doesn't give me the confidence that you know what you're doing or that this whole plan has been followed through. So my second and final question is, who exactly is the person or persons that came up with the idea to put the busing at the middle school? Who decided it was a great idea but not to inform anyone about it? I think everyone deserves to know the person or persons that plans on moving forward with this because it will have a long and lasting negative effect in this town for a long time. Thank you.
Next up will be Daniel Grazzioli.
Hi, Daniel Grazzioli, 1254 Arlington. You're kind of repeating a lot of the same things here, transparency, right? So our home back's direct up to the middle school. Board of Education's plan to build a forty-five bus depot. No one in Sherwood West has notified these plans. These plans have only been exposed after I personally, the surveyors, met outside. So that's when I went up to them and asked them about what was going on. From that point, I dealt things, the issue with a few great neighbors, after walking the neighborhood and dropping off the flyers and everybody in Sherwood West. No one that we spoke to was aware of the project, so then I started like, alright, turn it on me. This isn't just me at this point. Everybody needs to know what's going on. How can that possibly, how can such, you know, how can we trust that the board has the best intentions when there's such a lack of transparency? The excuse that we heard was the board member said that we're intending to notify the residents after we establish an organized plan. However, the school district was already purchased property, ten buses at that point. So it's very clear at that point we're past planning stages and already have asked. So I heard some other things that affect today and tonight that goes into accounting for the sports, which is kind of what I touched on here. But after fourteen months of this monumental program being implemented, how are we just finding out about it now? If we hadn't discovered it before this actual meeting, would it have gone through, no objections until it was deleted? Why would the Board of Education choose a property to build a bus depot without consulting with any residents? Has a feasibility study been conducted to show the significant money to be saved for all the residents of the great town, of our great town? Who has expertise to run this in-house bus company with the school district better than an actual bus company that's housed within the township already? Gene, if he answers you, have we looked into why you left Bindman after implementing their program? That program is not flattered because of roots that have been covered due to staff reasons. Question you this, Gene. Do you plan to leave the district and the residents on the hook for a program to implement where you claim to be an expert? How do we live in a town, if you don't live in this town and you're not subject to the tax increases that will happen inevitably? What happens if the state mandates implementation of electric buses after the new buses are purchased? What impacts implications on the residents for the years to come after the COVID relief funds that were tapped, touching on, or exhausted? Why aren't these funds being used to improve the schools' HVAC systems or create another areas of concern within the schools themselves? What is the extent of the liabilities we will now be responsible for as the resident of the town? As far as a bus depot, have there been studies done regarding the pollution that will have to endure being so close to so many buses to start up and run every day prior to sunrise and again until dusk? What is the pollution that will not have on those grounds? What will be the death we're reading with the forty-five buses reading, running next to Sherwood West? What will be the financial loss to home values surrounding this depot? No one in this town at all should have a depot near their homes. If saving the money was the overall answer, it would short sight it. We're going to taxpayer to save an estimated a hundred thousand. Now, this figure's a little different, but a nice round number of a hundred thousand. The census shows that in 2021, there was eight thousand nine hundred and sixty-six residents in West Effer. That means, on average, each resident will save eleven dollars and fifteen cents per year. Is eleven dollars per year worth having a recruit retain drivers, mechanics, transportation, and management staff? How about the insurance liability to take on? God forbid there's a catastrophic loss incident regarding one of the school buses and insurance doesn't cover the losses, the town now has to shoulder the financial burden that would be crippling. There is, there is a reason these private companies exist to offer their services. There are several other towns who utilize private busing companies for these exact reasons. Those towns who own and operate their own buses do that through shared services or regional districts. Washington Township has their own buses. They've been doing that for nearly fifty years and their program's well-established, not entering it in time in the economy before dealing with now with their policies and procedures. As towns are still away from it, we're bringing buses in-house. The Board of Education members have capitalized on the busy daily lives of residents in this town in hopes for ignorance, which is planned through. I'm embarrassed at how business is conducted within our school district. At the end of the day, the children are everything. And I'm asking you on this board to stop this project now before West Effer becomes a state embarrassment when this fails into financial pitfalls that we'll undoubtedly face. If this program's halted, the buses will purchase, could still be utilized for school trips, rented to third parties, or sold to bus companies. It's not too late to stop the damage you're incurring to this town. I urge you to stop and think about, think for yourselves, each one of you, think for yourselves on this, if that ever comes to a halt. How would you vote on this issue? How will you vote on this issue will have a great effect on your political future. We're all waiting on it.
Next up will be David Federico.
Hey Federico, 1287 Arlington Road, Sherwood West. Good evening, everybody. West Effer Board of Ed, Acting Superintendent Dr. Gismondi, and West Effer Administration and residents. I've been a West Effer resident for the last sixteen years. Whenever anyone ever asks me where I reside, I proudly and unequivocally tell them that I'm the West Effer Township resident. And then, I, I just, it's from the heart and I love, I talk proudly about this town all the time. I'm a school teacher. I work in a different district and I, 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 I talk about this district like it's the Holy Bible. And after hearing everybody here tonight and speak up, I'm even more proud, okay? Yeah, my decision to move to this town was easy. Affordable taxes, low crime rate, great sports programs and facilities, awesome municipalities. I loved it, I loved it. And most importantly, the great schools, which two of my daughters are currently enjoying here. To date, I've never felt the need to come tend to a board meeting. In previous years, the Board of Ed, Administration, and Town residents all worked harmoniously to keep things running smoothly. In the past, attended transparency, equity, and most importantly, integrity in how business was conducted and how major decisions were decided. Unfortunately, it has come to my attention that the Board of Ed and Administration have been in the process of putting a bus depot directly adjacent to a residential neighborhood right here in Sherwood West. When I learned of this, I was saddened and I felt betrayed by the township that I've come to love. On paper, things always seem to look so much better than they really are. But when you sit back and reflect on things, we often realize those good ideas might have drastic consequences when you look at them more closely. In this case, the school district has not taken into consideration how the West Effer residents feel about this major decision. The West Effer residents were never polled via survey, nor were they asked for their opinions. This decision was solely decided amongst the few Board of Ed members sitting here this evening. A decision of this magnitude that affects so many township residents, and most importantly, the children, should not be decided by a minority. Rather, if the Board of Ed and Administration of West Effer are confident, they would put out a survey to the West Effer residents to see how they would feel, how everyone feels here about this bus depot. The fact that this never happens suggests things are just not kosher. So the question remains, would a bus depot that would be jammed in an already small middle school be a good idea? Would taking up more space away from the kids who use that curb field where this bus depot would go for gym classes and track and field events and Field Day and a plethora of other things, would that be a good idea? I think not. Would cutting down more trees and building an ice rink of a bus depot with forty-six buses spewing exhaust, taking away the natural beauty of this development and this neighborhood, would that be a good idea? No. Would building a bus depot without even polling the residents and considering the lasting ramifications of its long-term effects to this town be a good idea? Would starting a new business venture during a time when record inflation, driver shortages, economic uncertainty that can certainly potentially cause the taxpayers of West Effer a potential million dollars, would that be a good idea? I don't know with you guys because I don't have the crystal ball. I can't predict the future. Last night checked, nor can you. The answer to this question is one that's logical. It's obvious and most importantly, ethically and morally sound. This is not a good idea. Property value, that's going down. Neighborhood, yeah, forget about that. This isn't a good idea. Many people say the root of all evil is money. Let's not make this cliche the deciding factor and the deciding fate for so many stakeholders here tonight. Board of Ed members, West Effer administrators, please do the right thing. Don't punish the children and the West Effer taxpayers who make this town so great, okay, by putting this bus depot there. Thank you.
Mr. Tuchin, do we have any virtual comments?
Uh, yes. First online, I have a Mark Carusello. Mark, if you're online, can you raise your hand? Uh, next I have a Brandy Donovan. Ms. Donovan, if you're online, would you please raise your hand?
I'm right here.
I'm sorry, submitted an online request. One, did you want to speak?
I can speak. I didn't expect to speak, but I'll speak. My name is Brandy Donovan Norris. Actually, I live at 946 Doncaster Drive. I'm a neighbor of Matt. He pretty much said everything. I'm from Cherry Hill. I moved to West Effer about seven years ago. Love this development. Love everything about it. I actually grew up in a, I think, neighborhood of Barclay Farms. And I was drawn to this town for schools, for the neighborhood, for the community. I didn't come to my neighborhood because I had buses in my backyard. I came for the beauty of Barclay Farms, like in Cherry Hill. All these people sitting here came to Sherwood West because they wanted to raise their children in a beautiful area. We didn't want to grow up with fumes in our backyards with buses. I just don't understand, like everybody else says, we just found out this and there's already so much that you guys already looked into. I just say, stop, like somebody else said, pause. Listen to all of us. Think. Would you live in a place where buses are? Would you sell your house and want to go to a place where there was buses in the backyard? No, you wouldn't. You wouldn't. Every single person here would stand up, say the same exact thing. We just want to live in a nice area where kids are number one, not busing or how we can make a quick buck, which we're really not. Based off of what everybody's saying, are we really going to make money at the end of the day? We're not. We're going to be spending millions and millions and millions. And how many years? Ten years, twenty years till we start saving money? Again, like everybody says, just let's pause. Think about what everybody's saying. Listen to all of us. Please, just do that.
Next up I have a William McKeever. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, thank you.
Bill McKeever, 931 Allogin Court in Sherwood, One Green. You know, when I saw the presentation earlier, I thought, that is just real. Everything is real today as far as prices going up, food, gasoline, everything. So I do understand the transportation going up as well, but then, listening to a lot of these people speaking and everything else, I have to kind of question this. Why is this gentleman here, Mr. Holcomb, I believe is his name, wasn't even given the opportunity to submit it to the board? And that just sent me back a little bit. So I wish that, I know this is in first conceptual stage, but I wish the board would really look into this deeply and keep the residents informed as far as the rate return on the investment. If we want to invest all these buses, how many years will we get our money back and what's going on? And I understand the concerns of the people in Sherwood West, and I have concerns too for that area. So I'm not going to repeat, I mean, if people spoke here tonight, I'm not going to repeat everything they said, so just I want the board to take a hard look at this and keep the people informed as far as all the facts and the true facts.
Thank you, Mr. Tuchin. Glenn Lutherspoon?
I'm here. I don't really have anything else to add. Heard a lot from people in my neighborhood. I live at 1161 Allogin. My concern was...
Mr. Lutherspoon, I'm sorry. The people who think online can't hear you, we'll all use a mic. I'm so sorry.
Hi, my name is Glenn Lutherspoon. I live at 1161 Allogin in Sherwood West. I have three kids that came to this middle school, two that went to West Effort High School, one at GCT. Transportation, you know, for middle school was easy for us. We didn't have to do anything, except ride them up to the back during the rain. My concern was because of the amount of misinformation that seemed to be out there in the beginning. I was under the impression that that vacant lot was going to be paved and all the buses parked on it. And that's not true. Of course, there are other concerns, legitimate concerns, about this whole concept, which I understand. But the reason I really came up here tonight and submitted my name online earlier was I wanted to make sure that that back walkway was not going to turn into a driveway for buses and for people who would start cutting through. Which from this diagram, I don't see that that was a consideration. You don't wish of what I'm talking about, the walkway becomes strong. I'm worried it would be faster than middle school. No, it's not a driveway, you know, it's not. Going to test drive it. That wasn't going to become another entrance or a way for these buses to get out and forth, or for certain people outside the development to start using that. That's all I have to say for this. Thank you.
I thought we'd get together after this, through your own magic, if they did, probably pluck words out of this. I have several other online, people who filled out the Google form, so that was to request to speak at the meeting if you were dialing in from home. Is there anybody else here that's in the meeting that you submitted a form online? Sherwood, would you like to go up and state your name, please, so I can check you off?
Thank you. I have Dennis Gallagher, 1281 Allogin Road, Sherwood West here. When I first heard about this concept, we're going to expand the transportation system to include our own in-house bus company, I was stumped, thinking, what are we doing this for? We have an existing contract. Hardly the drivers today. We're going to pay for this. We know we're paying for it, but how much? And now I'm learning tonight, different things that I didn't know before, and I did a lot of research as much as I could, between what Jean was saying and Mr. Holcomb was saying and what your website numbers, you're projecting, the numbers don't match. So I'm really more confused than I was now that I'm here. And in addition to the comments that people made here, I put together an over request, which I'll submit tomorrow, and I'm asking for you guys to answer just about all the questions that we've asked here tonight. Cost-benefit analysis, that kind of thing. Economic analysis, what's the size of this program you're building, the scope of it, that kind of thing. And I respectfully request from Jeanie that you waive the fees for providing all this information, and in fact, on the record, I would rather you not even give it to me, but put it all on the website so we can all see it, because I can tell you. And I think the transparency issue is loudly clear. So with that, I'm not going to discuss any more of the over request. That's a process, I understand that. But I do want to talk something fundamental, and that's to the elected members of the board. You guys have two essential duties. One is to represent the interest of us, the taxpayers and the parents, right? And your other duty is to represent the district and the students. It's kind of a dual role you have to play with, right? We understand that. And please keep that in mind as I go along. I looked at your website, meeting minutes for twenty-one and twenty-two, and there's not a single mention in there of why you guys are building up and developing this homegrown bus company. I see expenditures authorized from February of this year, in July, and in September, in the amount of about five point seven million dollars, right? And this is all previously authorized or previously discussed in meetings, which I can't find any information on in any of your meetings, uh, events. So my conclusion is, you're doing this in what you call executive sessions. I understand the executive session. When I filled out my over form, I saw the restrictions on certain types of information. And at the same time, when I kept looking at what you guys were citing as a provision in the law to prevent us from understanding what you're doing, how you're paying taxes, you're calling back information from the taxpayers, I'm going to read the permission for the people here. Under the over law, apparently, this is the one I see on every one of your minutes, by the way, for when you go into executive session, when you exclude the public. The other one has to do with contract negotiations and collective bargaining, and I understand why there's got to be privacy concerns there. But this one kind of baffles me. Maybe the solicitor can talk to this here. Any impending or anticipated litigation or contract negotiation in which the public body is or may become a party. Think about that. Telling us how much you're going to be spending for a program, I don't see that in the impending litigation anywhere. I kind of think that's stretching it. And then the second part of it says, any matters falling within the attorney's claim for it, to the extent that confidentiality is required in order for the attorney to exercise his ethical duty as a lawyer. And I'm thinking, well, I don't know if there's, I can't see any kind of a conflict of interest there either, from telling the taxpayers what your intentions are. And as someone mentioned earlier, you've been doing this now for almost two years, and we're just learning about it. I'm learning through the grapevine about these things. And I'm thinking, is that transparency? So I'm going to speak to the board now about, a little bit more about that. You know, I voted for all of you, and for Nancy, I voted twice. And when I gave you my vote, I gave you my trust. And I trust you're going to make good decisions based on sound, objective quality evidence, measurable evidence, and I'm hoping you're doing that. And when I look at the website, uh, minutes, I see all the good things you're doing, and you're doing lots of good things for the administration, for the kids, it's great.
If you have five minutes, if you could just finish up.
Pardon me? My five minutes is up?
If you could just finish up there.
Okay, thank you, thank you, okay? I really didn't hear what you said there, but I'm going to try to finish up, okay? So you're doing some good things, but when it comes to this bus expansion, you're very silent, so I assume you're doing this in the executive meetings, right? And so I would say to you now, please, people here are angry. Do not authorize any more expenditures for anything for this bus service or this development in Sherwood West until we, the taxpayers, understand the exact scope and boundaries of what this program is. We deserve that as taxpayers.
I'm not Mark, but I'm Nick. I'm Mark's cousin, he has to speak to proxy. I also live in Sherwood West, 1275 Allogin Road. So my question to you guys is, oh, you're moving all this money around, and government accounting works on budgets, right? You have to request a budget every year, and you have to use up that money. So what that means is that you're transitioning all this money from the students, I went to West Effort, you're transitioning from the education to the bus service, and, I mean, I went to eighteen years at West Effort, and I don't think the bus service ever affected my education. So I think Holcomb can easily take this over. You guys could have given him the budget, and they could have taken it over, signed a contract, and not raised a second penny.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Craig Berman, I live at 839 Doncaster Drive. Brought this to my attention by my neighbor, Matt Decken, and as you can see, everybody here is pretty upset. So I was comparing with Matt, and I thought I had the answer to the problem. I found the general district regulation that found zoning, prohibited uses. No building may be erected, altered, or used, and no live premise may be used within one hundred and fifty feet of a resident's district. For any use which is noxious or offensive by reason of odor, dust, vibration, illumination, or noise, or which constitutes a public hazard. I thought I had the answer, right? Well, that's not the answer, because I was told that this board doesn't have, it's not mandated to follow the zoning. I just, I lived here for thirty-five years, and this is the first meeting I've ever attended. And I think you can see by the people that are here that we just want you guys to make the right decision for our community. And we're hoping that you guys can explore alternatives to what you have proposed here, because there's got to be other alternatives. There has to be. Locations, we're describing it. Last gentleman had a great idea. How about we just give it to Mr. Holcomb, who I appreciate coming here.
John Lyon?
Oh, you're my client, so I'm next, sir.
My name is Jan Anastasi. My husband and I have lived here forty-four years in Sherwood West. We love you. I want to say, I am just so shocked about the lack of transparency, and I want to thank whoever put this letter together. I'm so proud of you people. I am so sorry I have not been paying attention to what has been going on, and if it weren't for you people, we wouldn't be here today. And I just hope the board really looks into all of those...
They were walking all up and down the drive.
Please, if you lived in our development, you wouldn't want this here. Thank you.
I saw them, they were like going on to one house. They were right by his fence. It was right by his fence, and the lights were there. They were measuring.
Freeman, 1167 Allogin. I just want to say, I understand, guys, uncomfortable, sure being here, she was listening to some of the negative things that maybe that or whatnot. I understand you all, and I appreciate the time that you've given to our project. For me, just knowing that that could possibly go in our neighborhood, that upsets me a little bit. One of the strengths that West Effort has is we have a lot of industrial areas, some that are a bit abandoned, some that aren't being used right now. There's a lot of township property that's been just given to, basically given to, small companies, school courses, things like that, over the last twenty-five years. There's been eminent domain that's been used to take back properties from longstanding families in the township. When Riverlands was put in, there was a lot of promises that were made there as well, as far as, you know, that's probably one of the first things you want to do is, you want to have, you know, say, we're going to put some things in for the children, like I see over there in that drawing, that you have the field doctor thing, it's going to be, you know, blocking the main thing that most people are here concerned about, it looks like it's on the drawing there, so there is no split or a road that's going to be able to go between the bus garage and our neighborhood. That's good, but we're still waiting for ice arena in Riverlands. We're still waiting for the horse trails and horse pastures in Riverlands, so those are all things that were made, that thing grew a good sale too, but it didn't come through. So we got a streethog, but we didn't get ice hockey. So along those things, you know, the main thing that most people are concerned about is that split between there and that turned into a road that goes into our neighborhood, and we don't want the buses in our neighborhood. I understand some of the people that live along the edge and have that in their backyard, and what it would do to their value and whatnot. One of the strengths we have as West Effort is we have a lot of open space, we have a very big township. I think that there's got to be alternate places. You look by the police station and fire hall, I bet you could get forty-five buses in there, and there's two ways to get out there. You know, there's a lot of township property that could also be looked at. And I understand that, you know, the way Brian explained to everyone, you know, it's only the planning states. We understand that, it's not mine to think about that. I just want to go on the record as a resident taxpayer, saying that the location that we're looking at right now is something that we definitely don't, my group will definitely just want to go on the record and say, to me, it's not a good idea.
Paul Waldech, 735 Corrill Drive. Just like you said, I think it's keeping Paul, it's a good statement, because I would also say, you know, you represent, and I think of this nation, you know, we the people, we the people, you are the people, you know, make those decisions based upon, think of that, you know, we the people, and, you know, I think you have to look at the contract again, and other locations, you know, maybe West Effort Park, I don't know, you guys can look at that, it's obvious, you know, it's not... It's not a good idea.
Kristy Jansen, I see that you're online, Ms. Jansen?
Hi, Kristy Jansen, everybody hearing? 647 Doncaster Drive. I can see the fields in middle school from my kitchen window, and I absolutely love it. I'm very concerned about a bus parking out in my backyard with the noise, the pollution, the traffic, the decreased value of my home, etc. Heartbroken for our kids. The kids that here running around at recess, throwing away my kitchen. The kids will lose their fields. For some kids, sports is all they have, it's the reason they come to school. They run track or run the field at the end of the day, they play field hockey, cross country, etc. Now our teachers are managed to monitor their safety because buses are going and out. Our kids that go to school with fields to play. The school is for them, it's not a way to ensure that you're playing in it. Also wondering if you've done any enrollment projection studies to see what type of enrollment you're coming with, building or any new homes? Will the other means expand our school buildings? And if so, a bus depot would prevent us from being able to do that, and live in the space. Also wondering, you know, would the contract be from Mr. Holcomb to re-estate our contract with Holcomb Services? Thank you.
Dr. Bush, that's it for all comments I have at this time. Thank you, Mr. Dujie.
Excuse me, I signed up one line, but I need to call my name.
Sorry, what's your name?
Joseph Owens. I signed up one line last week.
Yep, I do have you here, sir, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
1150 Arlington Road. I just had somebody say, well.
Hello, sorry, Mr. Owens, go ahead. Can you tone up a little bit, too?
Good evening, good evening, school board members, and good evening, neighbors of Sherwood West. Nice to see you all here tonight, the school night. I heard this bit about its concept. This is a concept, that's what we were told here tonight? I'm sorry, some people are okay with that, I'm not really. Because I've seen it go from a concept, from the back room, a concept, to they're out here and they're voting on it. So I'm not ready to accept that it's a conceptual plan. They have surveys, they have drawings, there's been work going on about this. I want to read from the West effort middle school handbook. I found this, it's on page 34, it says, "Transportation Arrival by Automobile. Please arrive in the morning and afternoon at the front entrance of the building. Only the front driving entrance and exit should be used. Deviating from this system can present serious safety hazards." Now, I've got to say, I think that's redundant, because I think any safety hazard is serious. So when you say "serious" safety hazard, that's a little bit of the Department of redundancy department. However, I want to know from Sherwood West folks, do you think everybody's dropping their kids off? I'm thinking they don't, because I live on Arlington Road and I watch every day. I'm just wondering, is anybody in the district responsible for monitoring that? And if so, who is that, and what are the results of that monitoring? The other question I have is, can you explain the safety hazard that exists? Because I can give you some ideas of what safety hazards occur from people not using the front entrance. But I was just all wondering if you all, since it's in your handbook, you might recognize that there is a safety hazard. Somebody said to me tonight, well, they're not driving the buses down Arlington Road. And, you know, there's a drawing, and it says that the driveway is not going to be used. That's the whole point, is that nobody, there's been no public detail about this plan. We don't know anything about it. And honestly, I don't believe it, if they say they're not going to run the buses down Arlington Road. Because if the depot's there, eventually, there's going to be other people up here, and they're going to be like, well, why don't we just run them out that side?
Yep, exactly.
I think you run the risk of a credibility problem here. You know, there have been, there have been details, sort of, and not really. We're all talking here tonight, and we haven't even heard the conceptual plan that was described. You know, I did hear about the financial side of it. I kind of understand that, and I know the board members want to pay attention to tax dollars. I sure hope that they do. But I really just wonder, are there nine of you, seven of you on the board, however many there are? There weren't four, or five, or six of you that said, you know, button up this bus depot back against a neighborhood is a really dumb idea? That's really the message that I think I, the neighbors are what offered to y'all. That's it.
Is there anyone in the audience that submitted an online request form and hasn't been called yet?
I did.
Can you state your name, please?
Danielle Via. So I wrote this before I saw the plans for tonight, this morning. Some of it may have been answered. My name is Danielle Via. I reside at 790 Carter Hill Drive. I am a lifelong resident of West effort, a West effort graduate, of course. I'm here tonight, like many others in our community, in regards to this proposed bus depot at the middle school. And I got to say, I have to say you've done a wonderful job bringing up questions that I didn't think of. And I'm really nervous. I am, I have a daughter in the middle school who walks to and from school every day. As you can imagine, her safety along with all the other walkers is one of my main priorities. And I know, as of right now, they're saying they're not going to open that path to buses, but since there hasn't been much transparency so far, I don't know if I can trust that. You know, in the last couple of weeks, I mean, I've heard for the last two years, they've been talking about the busing. In the last couple of weeks, I've come to learn that the location will be located at West effort middle school. This information should have been shared with the residents sooner. There should have been more transparency. I believe there are other options that are not located next to residential areas. We, as residents and parents, have had some unanswered questions to answer, but there's still a lot on the menu. Are you going to be more transparent now with all these concerns that all these parents have brought up in these residents? I disagree with the bus depot being built at the middle school. I ask the board to hear all the residents' concerns and to please find an alternative location or plan, and to not move forward with the West effort for the school location for the bus depot. Thank you.
Apparently, someone up there is getting bored, they hit the opportunity button. No, but the mic's plugged in somewhere. Normally, mics do not do that. That's a normal thing. Although, the speaker system here probably has been upgraded since like the 70s.
I believe that's all the online comments at this time for today. Thank you, Mr. Dujie. Thank you for it. All members of the comment, the comments? All members, there are the three comments. Ryan wants to speak.
I want to make this kind of quick, because I've been here for a while. But I know someone here, a graduate of West effort, spoke about how the schools look the same now as when he graduated years ago. But I don't know the specifics of the financials, but to offer a student perspective, I think the experience of students who benefit from shifting focus on what happens inside the school, possible. Evidence of this meeting, people seem to care about how their kids feel in school. And in fact, we were recently given a school climate survey that asked, as students, if we were proud of our school, and a bunch of different questions about our learning environment. And personally, like, as much as like, the temperature in the rooms where you walk in, and sometimes like in the math hallway, it's absolutely freezing, but then you go upstairs and you're like dripping in sweat. And, or like, the girls locker room has smelled terrible from the drains, like, every, it's not like how you'd expect the locker room to smell. It's like, I feel like something's wrong fundamentally. It's just, it's just things like that. Again, I don't know the financial specifics, and I'd love to talk about that with anyone on the board, if I'm authorized to know any of that information. But I just felt that the situation here today gave me an opportunity to speak on some of the issues that we have in schools, like someone had touched on.
Thank you, Ryan.
Student body, all this.
Can I get a motion to close? Public comment. All in favor? Moving on to regular business. My answer, Mr. Dujie.
That's it?
All right, thank you, Dr. Bush.
This is the part where they blow everyone off. Let's go.